Good evening, everyone. I'll be running the meeting for the board, although John Rice is actually conducting the meeting for us. And this is the continuation of the conditional use hearings for the Villanova CICD. I don't know about the rest of you folks. My goal is to wrap it up tonight, and I'm willing to camp out if necessary so we can accomplish that. So, let's begin.
Okay. We left at the last hearing with some testimony and just, as I understand what we're going to do tonight, the commissioners, you have in front of you some exhibits that the parties have all agreed should be admitted, and they've been pre-marked, there's some Villanova exhibits, and there are a couple township exhibits. So, let me just, and if any of the residents want copies, I do have at least one extra copy, and there's copies on the chair. So, the exhibits that are being marked and admitted tonight, Exhibit 827 is a response letter by Villanova to the Gannon Fleming Letter of July 18th, 2014. A-28 is a response letter by Villanova to the Gilmore and Associates Letter of July A-29 is a response letter by Villanova to the Ritu Letter of August 19th, 2014. A-30 is a response letter by Villanova to the Gilmore Letter of September 30th, 2014.
Excuse me, John Rice, are those all in this packet that you're?
Yes. Yeah, what you have in front of you are in red, the responses are Villanova's responses to the various comments by the township's consultants, and then Villanova has responded in the body of the consultant's letter. So, A-31 is the Villanova responses to the Ritu Letter or memorandum of September 3rd, 2014.
I think, Mr. Rice, that that is in the package also, and that's T6.
Is the microphone on? Yes, that response is to T6.
The A-32 is the Villanova response to the Ritu Letter of September 30th, 2014.
And that letter, Mr. Rice, is T7.
And A, oh, that was A-32. A-33 is a letter from E-Consult Solutions to Christopher Kowalski, I believe. Mr. Canelia, that this is a response to questions that were raised last time by Commissioner Booker, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's A-33. That's an October 17th, 2014 letter. A-34 is a document which shows Villanova enrollment increases. It covers 1981, '82 to 2013, '14 for full-time, part-time graduate law and total on-campus enrollment. That is a two-page exhibit, Exhibit 834. Exhibit 835 is correspondence from Tivani and Associates to Bill Bowle, which addresses crosswalk lengths at Lancaster Avenue and Ithan Avenue, and has attached to the letter three pages of drawings, a couple aerial photos. So, that is a five-page exhibit, and that is A-35. So, they've all been agreed to by all the parties, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
In terms of admission?
Yes, sir.
And just, Mr. Rice, just on A-34, that's not enrollment increases, but enrollment statistics, because you'll notice that there's not an increase as a result of that. It's enrollment statistics, A-34. Just terminology.
Right.
And I'll just request that Villanova Exhibits A-1 through A-35 be admitted into this record.
No objection.
Okay. They'll be admitted. And then tonight, you also, the commissioners also have in front of them, T5, which is a memo from Jennifer Brown to Bob Zinkowski, addressing the local tax impact of proposed construction at Villanova University. And I believe this is also to address some of the questions that had come up about the BPT in the prior testimony. That'll be T5, T6. As Mr. Bowle earlier stated, is a memo from Ritu dated September 3rd, 2014, and T7 is the memo from Ritu dated September 30th, 2014. So, is there any objections to any of these documents?
No objection.
Okay, so they'll be admitted also. Okay, with that, Mr. Bowle, you have a witness, correct?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Rice. That would be Steve Gabriel.
Okay, is Mr. Gabriel sworn in yet?
No.
Okay, let's swear in Mr. Gabriel.
Steven Robert Gabriel.
Mr. Gabriel, what's your business address?
3020 Columbia Avenue in Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
By whom are you employed, sir?
Ritu Associates.
What is Ritu Associates?
Ritu Associates is a consoling engineering and community planning firm.
All right, and what is your profession, sir?
I'm the group manager for our community development group.
All right, and have, has Ritu been retained by Radnor Township to ask us, to act as planning consultants in connection with this application?
Yes, we have.
And have you served in that role, have you, on behalf of Ritu, served that role, fulfilled that role?
Yes, I have.
All right, and have you been present at all but one of the hearings held in this matter?
Yes, I have.
And have you reviewed all of the documents that have been received in connection with the conditional use application?
Yes.
All right, and further, you're the author of Exhibit T2, which is a letter of August 19th, 2014, correct?
That's correct.
All right, and you've seen the responses to Exhibit T2 that were received into evidence this evening?
Yes, I have.
Very good. And while we're at it, Ritu also prepared two memoranda regarding the noise reports, the, and acoustical assessment of the conditional use application, and in a response to Villanova's Acousticians Report, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
All right, and the T6 is what has been referred to as a September 3rd memorandum from Ritu regarding the response to the conditional use application, and T7 is the September 30th memorandum in response to Villanova's Acousticians Report.
That's correct.
Very good. Now, and members of the Board of Commissioners, the T2 speaks for itself. I am not going to run Mr. Gabriel through all of the points of T2, because they have been, most of them have been dealt with quite extensively during these hearings, but I do want to highlight just a couple of his comments with regard to this testimony. So, if we, if you would please make reference to T2, and if you would go to your point number two, well, before we get into that, your analysis of the conditional use application involves an examination of the township's comprehensive plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in addition to the ordinances of the township?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, why do you review the township's comprehensive plan in connection with your review of these documents and recommendations to the commissioners?
For a, for a couple of reasons. First, and they both revolve around the zoning ordinance for the township, the purpose statement in Article 1 of the zoning ordinance for the township calls for the purpose of that ordinance to be to promote, protect, and facilitate coordinated community development, balanced density, general welfare, proper transportation, police protection, so on and so forth. And it states that the ordinance is to do this all in conformance with the township comprehensive plan. So, there's a clear mandate, clear direction given to keep in mind the comprehensive plan as we review development.
Okay, and so, go ahead.
One other aspect of the zoning ordinance appears in Article 23. Article 23 has to do with conditional uses, and it applies to all conditional uses. Conditional uses are fairly special uses, a little bit, little bit unique, a little bit different, conditions that are attached to them, and also are part of the ordinance as they are reviewed. There also, as was performed by the applicant, by Villanova, a development impact statement is called for within Article 23 for all conditional uses. Half of that development impact statement has to do with consistency with the comprehensive plan. So, in both of those instances, within the ordinance, the ordinance is calling for consistency with the comprehensive plan.
And your letter of August 19th, T2, was in response to the economic impact report that Villanova submitted, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and, and the numerology followed that report?
Yes, sir.
And just in general terms, you will agree, sir, that the ordinance, the zoning ordinance at Article 23 that deals with conditional uses, although it recognizes that conditional uses involve significant developments that will have significant impacts, it also requires that the impacts be dealt with as much as possible, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so that's why all of that ties in together.
Exactly.
Now, if I can direct your attention to paragraph 2 of T2, and this is one that's mentioned in a couple other sections, but we'll deal with this issue right now, and that is the Aldwin Triangle. Would you state, please, what your comment in 2 means to say, and then why you made it?
Well, in number 2, we're looking at comprehensive plan consistency for environmental and natural resources. And in the comprehensive plan in that chapter, at page 2-40, and in figure 219 following that page, the Aldwin Triangle is identified as a core reserve wooded area, and all of those properties on that list are strongly recommended and strongly encouraged to be preserved by the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so that, that's, that's the cause of your comment that would request that consideration be given to preserving that entire triangle property as opposed to the two acres minimum ordinance compliance that has been depicted thus far?
That's right. It's over and above the minimum ordinance requirement because of the nature of the, of the property.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask you to next jump ahead all the way to comment 18. And in a general sense, 18 and a few other comments that you may deal with both sound and visual buffering, correct?
That's correct.
All right, would you state, please, to the, to the commissioners, what your recommendations are with regard to this application concerning those matters as they've been submitted thus far?
Yes. Here, the comprehensive plan in Chapter 8, the second, the second goal within, within that chapter talks about institutional uses. That whole chapter is about institutional uses, and quite honestly, there's a lot of discussion in the plan about the Villanova properties and Villanova University overall within the community. Institutions are recommended and encouraged within the comprehensive plan and within this chapter to harmonize with adjacent land uses. I'd call this more of a good neighbors' policy and goal within the comprehensive plan. And one of the key elements of that is physical buffering, both visual as well as noise. So, the, the plan, the comprehensive plan makes this, makes this point, and so our comment dealt with visual buffering as well as noise, and tied, tied the plans for landscaping and for buffering of noise back to the comprehensive plan.
All right, and so you have in this, T2, and otherwise requested Villanova to consider additional buffering, additional noise reduction methods, et cetera?
That's correct, and, and in this case, especially with, with the visual buffering, the standard within the zoning ordinance, as, as planting buffer strips are defined in the zoning ordinance, is that an immediate screen that cannot be seen through must be provided, and the comprehensive plan backs that up.
And that's the goal, that's your goal in connection with that comment?
That's correct.
Okay. And also, I have represented to the Board of Commissioners at the last hearing that we would be presenting little testimony about the noise reduction, because is it safe to say that there's been a great deal of cooperation thus far from Villanova in response to your suggestions?
Yes, there has been, both noise as, as well as visual.
And are you confident that these are both matters that can be successfully resolved for the benefit of all parties at land development?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Going back a minute to your discussion of the comprehensive plan, is it fair to say the comprehension, comprehensive plan represents a set or series of goals to accomplish what is sound planning principles, whereas in ordinance are objective standards that must be complied with?
Yes, and I think in comprehensive planning, the, and in this plan in particular, there are, we, we run from goals, objectives, strategies, and implementation actions to then make the connection to the standards of the zoning ordinance. And your ordinances are really the implementing actions of the policies and goals of your comprehensive plan. One is based on the other.
Right, so the, the ordinance is attempting to set forth the objective standards with which the applicant must comply, and sometimes the comprehensive plan suggests goals that would require the applicant to go a little bit farther?
Yes.
All right. And lastly, with regard to your report, I'm going to ask you to jump ahead to numbers 49 and 50, with regard to your observations of the economic report that was presented by Villanova with regard to the fees that were going to be generated by this application in development.
Okay. The, the report talks about the new residents, the new students that would, that would fill some of the vacated off-campus living units as now being close into, into Radnor Township and Villanova, and this would lead to more sales and increased gross receipts or business privilege taxes for the township. However, earlier in the, in the report, there's, there's an indication that the, on page 6, that the retail incorporated into the development, proposed development, will actually help to meet a lot of the daily needs of the students. This would suggest that the students may not need to leave campus nearly as often as before. So, it, it seems a little bit of a contradiction in terms of whether or not the students who move in closer to Villanova will actually cause more sales within the businesses of, of Radnor Township. In addition, there are students who will be moving into the development dorms who currently live on West Campus, they're already here on campus, and many students, I think most people, have some pretty well-established patterns of usage and patronage of businesses, and whether they live off-campus or on-campus, I think those patterns will remain pretty much the same. And so, whether or not we will see increased sales, I think, is very unclear.
All right, and then you have a response and comment about the university's, the applicant's estimate of the one-time permit fees, approximately $5.6 million that would be coming in as a result of this development. What is your comment to that?
Well, simply that the, the report does point out those, those dollar amounts in revenues, one-time revenues. But I think it's important to also be clear that those are, those are not revenues that are a windfall to the township, that they just fall into the township's lap without any effort. There's an awful lot of work that goes into those, those taxes and those one-time fees, particularly as noted in the report, the building permits and the then building, building inspections, construction plan reviews, that will all be necessary. That's what those permit fees cover, is the expense for doing those things in accordance with the statewide building code.
And in addition to just covering the expenses of its own department, says that Radnor is sometimes called in these connections to hire independent consultants or contractors to handle these matters and pay them, correct?
That's correct.
Out of those permit fees?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
And your last comment in 50 that I want to address deals with Villanova's comment that, the opinion that the project would not cause any additional burden on township administration. What is your comment on that?
Well, I think whether it's, whether it's been meetings like this one, formal meetings, or many, many informal meetings that have taken place over the, over the process so far, correspondence that the administration has had to maintain with board members, residents, and so forth, the ordinance work that went in, that, that the community development department put, put forth in bringing this particular use into the ordinance itself, and then in the future, compliance work that the township will have to perform through its community development department as the project proceeds, I think really, all of us can agree that there's been an awful lot of burden on township administration and community development so far and anticipated in the future.
All right, very good. And do you stand willing to answer any commissioner's questions about any of the other points raised in T2 if they feel necessary to ask?
Certainly.
Very good. Cross-examine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gabriel, is it correct that when an applicant makes a land development application, he actually posts an escrow professional fees with the township?
Professional fees to cover professional consultants? Yes.
And does that fees also cover things such as the zoning officer as well? It does not, there is not a, in the Radnor, in the Radnor budget and in the Radnor ordinance, there is not a fee for review by the zoning officer and other staff, including the traffic engineer and the township engineer?
The professional consultants, yes, but in-house staff, to my knowledge, and certainly based on my understanding of what other municipalities do and what the municipality's planning code allows, no.
Are you also aware that during the drafting of this ordinance, Villanova also posted an escrow account with the township from which fees were extracted?
Yes.
And is it also true that for any, any independent contractor that would come in for the township for inspections, that would also be paid by the applicant?
Paid out of those one-time permit fees.
Would, if an independent contractor comes in, I'm not talking about township staff, if an independent contractor comes in, is that not also paid by the applicant?
If they are doing the building, required building inspections, yes, it would be.
And also, it is not your anticipation that the township will increase staff as a result of Villanova proposed development?
I can't answer that. You'll have to talk with township staff.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any of the other parties have any questions for Mr. Gabriel? No? Any board members have questions for Mr. Gabriel? Okay, Mr. Bowle?
That's all I have to present. Thank you.
Any other witnesses, Mr. Bowle?
No further witnesses.
I know that Mr. Yanopoulos wanted to testify. I don't know whether there's any other parties who intend to testify or present exhibits or testimony. Mr. Yanopoulos, are you, are you ready to go? Okay, let's, let's just go off the record for a minute, so.
Do you want to have time, Yanopoulos? Yes. Yes, now, has that exhibit already been included?
Do you want to, you want to give it through the record?
Well, it's still be a telegraph. Mr. Yanopoulos, is, that's already been put in the record?
I'm not, sir, I have no objection to go it, to a going in for what it's worth. Of course, you know, your, the board always has to deal with credibility and things of that nature, but for the presentation itself, I have no objection.
Do you have an adoption? I do, actually, yes. Hold you for a minute. Okay, let's see what Mr. Yanopoulos first.
Mr. Rice, I, I think there are more residents that want to testify. I think they've not responded to your question, though.
No, there's two.
Oh, okay. Great, thank.
I have a question. I thought there was going to be open comment after we closed the case.
There is going to be, there is going to be public comment. Well, but it may happen, because the board is not going to make a decision tonight. The board will make a decision once they have a written decision in front of them. So, the public comment, in my view, probably ought to happen when that, when they're ready to vote and before they vote. That would be the time to have public comment. Now, the board hasn't discussed when that's going to be. Assuming we close all the testimony tonight, they have 45 days to render a written decision. So, sometime between tonight and 45 days out, this is something that will have to be put on their agenda for a vote, and public comment can happen that night. Okay, but let's, let's, let's forget about public comment until we get all the testimony in, then we can have a discussion again. Mr. Bowle?
Yeah, I had understood public comment would take place tonight. That was my understanding, but that's what I relayed to, to the residents that had been asking me.
Okay, it's really going to be up to the board, but.
Okay.
You know, what, what my fear is, if you have it tonight, it's going to be on the agenda for a vote a month from now, and there's going to be public comment again. I think it makes sense to have one night of public comment on this, not two.
John, does.
But that's up to the board to decide how they want to handle that.
Maybe up to the board, but at the same time, unless, unless someone has standing, do they have the right to speak in a public way during a hearing?
They have the right to make public comment, yes. Whether they have, whether they, they're a party or not, yes.
And we really haven't, as I, as I, I believe, we haven't really allowed for that in any special way.
John, it's seven o'clock. Just let everybody speak, whether they.
Well, that's what I think we should do.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I don't think there's going to be a lot.
Just, just one comment. Remember, public comment is not part of the record. The record closes when the case closes.
Right. Okay, so let's, let's get through the rest of the witnesses, and then it's a board's pleasure, we'll have the public comment tonight for anyone who's here. Okay, Mr. Yanopoulos, we're going to need to swear you in first.
First name's James, last name's Yanopoulos, Y-A-N-N-O-P-O-U-L-O-S. All right. I, I am here to testify on my own behalf tonight. I will dispense with asking myself questions. I will just state for the record, I have my undergraduate degree from Haverford College. I earned my MBA from Harvard Business School, and I have a doctorate in psychology from Widener University. I'm licensed as a psychologist. I work independently as an independent educational consultant. I have a business called Write College for Me, and basically what I do is I help high school students figure out the whole process of applying to college, where they might want to consider, and all the steps involved in doing that. As such, while I'm not an expert on traffic, I do consider myself an expert on trends in higher education. So, from that aspect, I do have a good deal of experience looking at things like enrollment and so forth. So, in the last couple of meetings, there have been a couple of witnesses I've questioned about, particularly Mr. Tivani, and also Ms. Kaminski, about the relevance of looking at the trends for student population in, in this application. Mr. Tivani, in his report, concluded that the student population was flat. There was a, an exhibit, a graph showing it is flat, and I did have some questions about that at the time. about that at the time, because I had some data that indicated something different. Now, as you'll see, there are a couple of other exhibits that I will discuss as well. There's one that I'm about to hand out, and as a result of my research, I did get information sent to me from Villanova and sent by Mr. Canelia and Mr. Bola last Friday. So I'd just like to share that with you and discuss it.
Let's hand them up. We'll mark them. I have an N1, which I think was a neighbor.
Jim, are you handing up? Villanova's thing's been marked as A34, so I don't know.
We're going to mark these separately, though.
Yeah, these are Jim's, I think, right?
Right. We're going to, we're going to mark, you have two?
I've got plenty. I've got one.
No, two different ones? Two different?
Excuse me? It's really one exhibit with the background. It's sort of...
Oh, okay. Okay. So let's, let's mark this as N2. This will be N2, and this is a document, well, Mr. Yanopoulos will explain what it is, but it's a document addressing Villanova enrollment information. Okay, Mr. Yanopoulos, let me just ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
You prepared this document?
I did.
Okay. So the first, first three pages seem to be a chart.
Yes. The attached pages are really just, you know, the background information to demonstrate where the data were collected from.
And the sources are the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Villanova University website, and American Society for Engineering Education.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, go ahead and explain what this is, then.
Yes. So these are, these are the data that are reported to outside sources. For example, in 2003 and 2008, the Department of Education...
Could you back up just a little?
Sure.
Sorry about that. You've got a good voice.
Thanks. This is the data reported to the Department of Education in 2003, 2008. The data for 2013 are reported on Villanova University's website, and indeed, I don't know what the exhibit number is, but the note from Catherine O'Connor, the Associate Dean of Enrollment Management, does concur that that's 10,697 is the number reported, and was the number reported to the Department of Education, to other sources. You know, the one I had here was, for 1998, was the American Society for Engineering Education because it was the easiest one to research. But these are the data that they report to other sources, too. When you see the U.S. News and World Reports, Princeton Review, and so forth, these are the data that they're getting from the university and from all universities and colleges. So as you see here, this is why I had questions about whether the student population was indeed flat, because what I see from 1998 to 2013 was actually an increase of 1,201 students. As you look further at the breakdown, you can see that that was mostly graduate law and professional as opposed to undergraduate. You know, nevertheless, from the point of view of my concerns about the traffic, the assumption was that they all drive cars. After having raised this issue, I did get this, and you have it in your exhibits now from Associate Dean of Enrollment, Catherine.
It's Exhibit A34.
Right.
Right.
And in that, she basically indicates that there are two headcounts. There's a headcount that they report externally, but there's another headcount that they're maintaining internally that, to the best of my knowledge, nobody but Villanova was aware of.
I'm going to object to that. That's not what the letter says. It's a misstatement of what her letter states. Her letter states that it's the difference between total enrollment and total enrollment on campus. What Villanova presented in A34 is the total enrollment on campus. What Mr. Yanopoulos is presenting is the total enrollment, which includes online students and students studying abroad and students not on campus.
Is that true, Mr. Yanopoulos?
Yeah, I'm not, no, I don't disagree with that. I'm sorry if I misstated that.
Okay, well, you're to testify on what you prepared.
Right.
And not on some other exhibit. So just tell us what you have here.
Well, so what I have here is I see, I see an increase, and you can see the increase. Now, you know, I, obviously, I saw the other two exhibits when they were presented to me. And you can see that there has been some variation in the other two exhibits. I would point out that in 1985 is the year that Rolie Massimino and Ed Pinkney brought the championship to Villanova, and you can see by Villanova's own on-campus enrollment totals that shortly after that, by the year 1988, '89, according to their data, they blossomed to 11,874.
About a 500-student increase.
Yes. Yes. You can see since that time, it's actually, from their on-campus enrollment, it appears to have decreased some. My comment about this, or question to you as a board who will decide this, is as a board that needs to make sure you do the, act in the best interest of the residents of the township, without either a traffic report that considers what the impact of 11,000 or 12,000 students on campus would be, or a commitment to some sort of a cap on that enrollment, how can you be sure that you're protecting the township? That would really be my question for you, and I think a question that you really need to consider.
Keep going. Okay. You're done?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any objection?
No objection.
To this? Mr. Yanopoulos, this, maybe it's Mr. Canelia, this Exhibit A34, when it says total on-campus enrollment for these numbers, that, I mean, that's not living on campus, is it?
No, that's not living on campus. That's commuters.
That's commuters and everybody, okay.
Yeah, that's consistent with what Mr. Kowalski testified to earlier in these hearings.
Does that exclude, does that number exclude, like, students studying overseas?
Yes. The number that we presented does exclude students studying overseas.
And could you, do the students study overseas for an entire school year or part of the school year?
I think it varies. I think some of it is a semester, some may be the entire year. I don't...
They study per semester. Chris Kowalski. They study per semester, and so the numbers here, particularly for undergrads, represent an average of the fall semester and an average of the spring semester. So that's reflective in both semesters of the same number of students.
And do, would you happen to know offhand how many students per year study overseas?
I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Yanopoulos, from any, from the board?
I thought they asked first, but, no?
No questions.
Yeah, I didn't think...
No questions.
No questions, thank you.
All right, Mr. Yanopoulos, thank you.
Okay.
Who else? Gaila McCloskey. Right. Okay. Come on up and be sworn in, and I want to remind you, this is testimony, not statement, not argument, not what you'd like the board to do, but testimony, factual testimony. So tell us who you are, and you're here for the League of Women Voters, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And we'll have to have you sworn in also.
My name is Gaila McCloskey. We actually had a prepared, had some prepared comments, but there's one item in particular that I think should be made part of the public record. It's an objection to the process. As in the past, the League believes that land development should be consistent with the Commissioner-approved Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Key aspects include preservation of existing land uses and adequate buffering between commercial...
Mr. Rice, I'm going to object. I'm sorry, this is not testimony.
It's public comment.
All right, fine. We are concerned, I'll get to the point. We are concerned that approval of the proposed conditional use development will result in a de facto approval of the expansion of parking lots on the south side of Lancaster Avenue and beyond the existing CICD area. All studies, including those related to traffic control and accommodations for cars, incorporate these lots. At the same time, the 1988 and current Comprehensive Land Use Plans state that institutional development should be limited solely to...
I'm sorry, this is argument, this is public comment, it's not testimony. I'm sorry, Gaila, it's not testimony.
It's not testimony. So do you have any factual, I mean, what you're reading is an opinion statement from the League. It's not facts that this board can rely on to reach the conclusion, the conclusions which you're reading, that there's going to be an issue. You've also objected to the process. What do you mean by that?
Well...
What, what part of the process?
Is that the, we're afraid that the parking lot will be de facto approved if the CICD is approved at the same time, because the parking lots are, the use of those parking lots are required in order for the CICD to go forward.
Parking lots and the parking garage?
The parking lots is what we're talking about.
The parking lots. Oh, okay. Okay.
So that's that we, in fact, our specific objection is, is we think that the conditional use development resulting in parking needs should be considered apart from this process, and we're afraid that because they're lumped together, that there will be de facto approval of that.
Okay. I'm not sure I understand that, but I know that the parking lots are, I believe, zoned a little bit differently than...
They're commercially zoned, and Mr. Gabriel pointed that out at the beginning, but it's not been brought up, as far as I can tell through reading the transcripts.
Okay. But just so everyone understands, this is conditional use approval, and then there's a land development process where those types of details, I think, are going to get worked out. So I would bring that issue up again during that process, but what you're saying tonight is not testimony.
Okay. Well, I'm not a lawyer, and this has all been rather unclear about what the process is.
Well, testimony would be that you, you or someone that you call would have expertise or have done studies to support what you just stated. You know, my traffic engineer, my planning expert, you know, did a study, and this was the conclusion that this is going to be good, bad, indifferent. That's testimony. So are you almost done? Is there anything else?
I'm finished.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe I can, maybe I can draw out some testimony?
Well, I don't think that's your role, Commissioner Booker. Your role is to judge the testimony, and I don't believe...
That there wasn't any testimony?
I don't believe there's any testimony from this witness. Maybe the next witness.
John, that type of opinion can be read prior to the vote.
Right.
Okay. There'll be a venue for that.
That's public, that's public comment and reasons why the board should or should not do something on a vote. It's not testimony. Want to testify? Or is everyone else looking for public comment? Seeing no other witnesses?
Can I have a word?
Yes. Mr. Bola, Mr. Canelia, is there anything else either you want to present?
Mr. Rice, I think we're both a little confused. Is there to be another hearing with public, just designated to public comment, or is that taking place tonight?
Well, it sounds to me like the board wants to have it tonight.
Okay. So then afterwards?
Right.
Should they close the hearing?
Well, and I guess the question, I think the discussion on conditions probably is not a matter for public record, anyway.
No, you submit, if you have proposed conditions, submit them to me.
Right, and that's what...
And the neighbors. If there's conditions that, not the neighbors, the parties who are neighbors, you can submit conditions, things that if the board approves this, you would like attached as conditions. Conditions generally have to be supported by testimony. They're not wish list items, but under the law for conditional uses, you have to have a basis in the testimony to attach a particular condition. So, and there may, so...
And John, that's likewise with the board, the board itself?
Correct. Correct. It's got to be based on the ordinance or the testimony or the comp plan to some extent. So that'll be done outside of the hearing. All right.
You know, there is one quick thing that I had mentioned to Mr. Bola, and I think I mentioned to you in an email regarding the crosswalks for Lancaster Avenue and Eithon. I'd just like to clarify that on rebuttal testimony with Mr. Tweedy. I expect it to be very, very short, and it's already marked as an exhibit, and Alex would just explain what that exhibit represents.
Okay. Mr. Tweedy, you're already sworn in?
Yes.
Okay.
Alex, I'm going to refer to A35, which is the exhibit that we just referred to regarding the crosswalks. I believe this is a couple of pages. Could you tell the board what this represents and its relevance to this right-hand turn lane that we've been talking about for a while?
Correct. Exhibit A35 is, as mentioned...
Excuse me a second. Jim, can you get this up on the broadcast?
Yeah, this is the second page of it. I think there's one page before it.
Thank you.
It's a response letter or memorandum to Mr. Bola from Frank Tavani, the traffic consultant, in response to the township's testimony at the last hearing relative to our opinion on the right turn lane's impact on the pedestrian scramble phase and the length of crosswalks and the impact of, well, the benefit or disbenefit of that turn lane relative to the pedestrian scramble phase. Upon review of the exhibits provided during the township testimony, we've done some further research on the calculations, and we just wanted to get in the record some additional information, some responses to those comments from, from the township traffic consultant during their testimony. If you remember at the last hearing and what this memo highlights, the basis of the previous testimony was that the westbound crosswalk or the eastern crosswalk that's in front of the area, the Performing Arts Center in the stadium, the township testified that that was the controlling length for the pedestrian scramble phase for the longest crosswalk of the intersection, and that since that was the longest leg, any impact relative to the right turn lane didn't change the overall pedestrian timing of the intersection. That was all based on the signal plan that's on record with PennDOT. In reality, we did some field measurements, true in the field, and since that signal plan was prepared, PennDOT has done some updates to the crosswalks in that intersection based on the general ADA upgrades they've been doing throughout the Commonwealth for the past couple of years. And if you look at the arrow photo that's on the screen now as part of Exhibit A3, they actually modified how those crosswalks were oriented and actually made that crosswalk more perpendicular and thus a shorter distance. So as currently sits on the ground today, it is no longer the westbound approach or the eastern crosswalk that is the longest crosswalk. It is, in fact, the eastbound approach or the crosswalk on the left side that would be impacted by the right turn lane that is the longest crosswalk of that intersection and would be further impacted should a right turn lane be installed at that intersection. So the basis of this exhibit, and our opinion is that since the westbound or eastern crosswalk is already shorter than the eastbound approach, without the right turn lane, we have an opportunity to preserve the existing pedestrian scramble phase through some timing revisions as discussed by the township traffic consultant previously, but the addition of a right turn lane at that intersection would increase the pedestrian scramble phase. And just to clarify that testimony as well, everyone was always talking about it being a 12-foot right turn lane for the impact, but due to the angle of the intersection and the fact that it, the crosswalk hits at the radius, even though it's a 12-foot right turn lane, the radius return actually makes it longer, so it's not just a 12-foot longer walking path. It's, depending on the size of the radius, it could be up to six, 15, 16 feet. 16 feet longer crossing with the addition of a right turn lane. So, we just wanted to clarify that previous testimony with, with some updated information. Thank you. Nothing further.
Mr. Bowler?
Just a question or two. Alex, did you, did you review the warrant analysis that Ms. Kaminsky had performed for the right-hand turn lane?
I've only looked at the physical crosswalk lengths as a civil engineer. All the warrant analysis is more traffic-based, and I didn't review that specifically.
All right. So, you don't have an opinion as to that warrant analysis?
Yeah, I'm not a traffic engineer, but a civil engineer.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all.
Anything else? So, you're resting?
I'm resting.
We're resting too.
Okay. So, the record's closed. We can go off the hearing and just have a discussion how the board--
Next, public comment.
Just remind everybody, we're now in public comment, so we will employ our five-minute rule that we've started in the past several months. So, just keep that in mind, that you need to be succinct when you make your comments and fit it into five minutes. I will warn you when you're getting close. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, board's going to take public comment for anyone that's here on what you've heard, what your opinion is. Gail, if you want to come back up and finish your statement, that's part of public comment. Okay? Most of you know the procedures. State your name, your address, and--
Good evening. Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road. I may take a second to get organized. And can I have, I'm going to lay some exhibits, some of my boards. Thank you so much. Can we zoom in on this area first, and then I'm going to go down? I love people watching this live to be able to see what these are, if you could.
Can you come on in?
Let me--
The Biomed, Johnny, you could--
Jim Dolan, can you zoom in more on the--
That's a good idea.
--type sheets? Now, slide it over.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. We'll start there, and we'll inch around. Thank you so much. Hi. What I'd like to talk to, and I may go two or three minutes over my five-minute. I called some of the commissioners and told them I'd be going over. So, thank you. Esquire Rice. A lot of the testimony and the zoning change that was made for this project, nobody could figure out-- Oh, little space. Nobody could figure out how much value the township was giving and how much value Villanova was giving. And there's recognition that the township's giving value, and I think that Villanova recognizes that they're giving value, no doubt. So, I wanted to try and walk people through from the eyes of a developer and how they would look. And it's, it's interesting that we have the Biomed project going through and under testimony, sworn testimony. They've basically given us a link to value, what the value Villanova's been given from the township. So, that's the theory tonight. What you're seeing here is from the Delaware County, what I call tax parcel view, and it shows what somebody paid for a piece of ground, how much acreage is. And Biomed in 2000 paid 80 million for an obsolete building and 18.94 acres. So, if we walk ourselves across and a few hundred yards down the road to the Villanova parking lot, which is 13 acres, we can do algebraic finagling because we know that Biomed admits, "We bought the thing. It was never full, and the building's not worth anything." So, basically, they paid 80 million for land, and it was 18.94 acres. So, the parking lot is 13 acres. And if you do the math, which anybody can, and I'm not going to walk everybody through that because I know Mr. Rice is going to get me on that time, it essentially says that-- that the Biomed site at 80 million 13 years ago would come down in math, that Villanova would have had to pay or find 29.25 more acres from the zoning change we gave. As we recall, the buy right gave them 350 dorms and maybe some ancillary uses. I'm not counting in the valuation ancillary uses. It gets too complex. But there was 29.25 acres given in this deal of added density. And if you extrapolate what Biomed paid 13 years ago, and we would all love to purchase our house 13 years ago, you come up with about $4.22 million an acre. If you do the math, you come up with on purchase value, something like $121.8 million of value that Radnor Township transferred, if you will, by changing the zoning code to allow Villanova to go from 350 dorms to 1,135. Again, I did not count all the other uses, which will be profit generating. If I use the assessed value from the Delaware tax parcel, which is 41.2 million, basically a 52% factor, then our gifts would have come down to 63 million. It's between those numbers. I took the average, and I started asking, "What did we get for 92 million dollars of value?" I've not attended all the meetings, but I know that a lot of the township people have asked that and are watching. Did we get naming rights on any of the buildings on the campus?
It's not a conditional use issue.
No, I'm just asking in theory because people have called me and said, "What did we get for the 92 million?"
But, but nothing. The township got nothing for a zoning amendment. I mean, it's, there's no money to change his hands.
Okay. So, did we get--
Your arguments seem to me to be all about the CICD ordinance, not the CICD hearing.
What I'm trying to get to is that I want you all tonight to remember that you represent constituents and that they maybe want certain things, and you can put conditions to the conditional use. So, I'm asking, what would they be? Would they be the pilot on the commercial portion? Okay. Not student-oriented, but a restaurant. Would they be the landscaping that matches the front of this project so that it's dressed up and it matches? Right now, we have something that looks very, you know, rustic and maybe sort of run down, quite frankly, the Aldwin Triangle. So, would we get as a condition that matches the front of their landscaping plan? Would we get the barriers that Mr., from Mr. Ratu said, or the enhanced stormwater? I'm wondering what your conditions are.
Leslie, that's your time, but I'll give you another 30 seconds.
Thank you so much. I don't know if I have anymore. I think I-- The other point I would like to point out is that you have 92 million of value exchange, and that was just the premium of the land that I did, not, not what they already had there, what they would have had to buy. So, when we also talk about permits, which everybody has, I would like to enlighten people that the 5-point-some million dollars in permits is also the gross amount that we added with density. If you net it down to what the buy rate was--
Thank you, Leslie.
--we're giving them 3.6 million in permitting fees.
Thank you, Leslie. That's your time.
There are 92 million in value. I hope you get a good list of conditions. Thank you.
Gail? Save it for when we vote.
Public comment. Any other public comment? St. Anopoulos?
So, now that this is not testimony, you know, in the testimony, I gave facts, and I posed the question. I would like to suggest that in terms of enrollment, that in order to protect the township, I think you do need to do your jobs, and I either insist that you see a traffic study that includes the potential impact of an 11,000 or 12,000 on-campus enrollment, or insist on some sort of a reasonable cap on enrollment, like 10,500, which, by the way, according to Villanova's own data, they haven't exceeded 10,500 since 1994. That's 20 years. So, that doesn't seem to me it would present much of a hardship for them. Thank you.
More public comment? Will we adjourn?
Wait. Well, I, my questions were not answered from last, last meeting. At the end of last meeting, I had a question that was, it's not been answered.
T-5 addresses it, though, right?
Yeah, I think the discussion at the last meeting was, Mr. Canelia was going to attempt to--
That's 833 in your exhibit packet?
Right. Commissioner Booker, I know you got it tonight, but it's in--
Yeah, actually, I got it as we get, as we start the hearing, but that's kind of, that's kind of not fair, but that's all right.
We, we all did.
I read through it.
We all did. So, that, that is Mr. Canelia's response to the questions you raised. Mr. Canelia, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, there's nothing else.
Isn't T-5 also the township response, too? So, there are--
Again, my specific--
--expert opinions on that.
And, and those both are, those are both, they are both informative, but they don't respond to the questions that I asked.
Mr. Rice, in the context of a conditional use hearing, do the members of the board who are serving as the judge or the jury, judge and jury, do they ask questions of that nature?
We've asked questions at every hearing that we've had.
Well, I mean, the issue is that there's a question that's been posed. Villanova's attempted to answer it. Commissioner Booker is not happy with it, but I think that's, I think that's--
It doesn't answer the question.
But I, right, but I think that's all you're going to get.
That's the answer.
And that goes to your vote and, you know, your opinion as to what the decision ultimately is.
And I, I think T-5 sort of, you know, supports Rich's claim, as I see it at least. T-5 is a, essentially, it's the township weighing in on the position and saying there's insufficient information to make a determination. So, to me, there is a, there's an argument and a counterargument provided from two different experts.
Nonetheless, those don't address the question, the question that I had. All right? So, the question that I had is, with respect to the impact statement on pages 29 and 30, who prepared those, who, who did the applicant's economist prepare the information used on these pages? That was the question. And then, if he did, then this letter he gave is not consistent. So, if he didn't, who wrote this? That was my question last meeting and remains my question.
My recollection is it was a compilation of the various consultants that put this together. They did different pieces. And you're not going to get any different answer than that, Commissioner Booker. I mean, you can ask it five more times, but Villanova, I don't see anyone jumping up to the podium to answer that question. So, again--
So, the, all right, that's fine.
It goes, it goes to--
The answer we got was that the land use or the, one of the engineers prepared the statement. That's what I got.
Correct.
I also had a question of Steve. Gabriel, please, as well?
Hearing's closed.
It's public comment.
Mr. Rice, there's been an objection raised to something I think you need to listen in here.
Mr. Booker asked, wanted to ask Mr. Gabriel a question, and I objected to it since the record's closed.
Yeah, the record, the record is closed. I mean, I would ask that question after the board adjourns.
We have a motion on the floor.
Well, why can't, let's, let's--
We have a motion to adjourn.
It's public, public comment.
Mr. John, or Mr. Nagel? Mr. Rice, if I could just, I think Mr. Bowler and I just need some clarification. Mr. Bowler's prepared a list of proposed conditions from the township. I believe you've seen them. I don't believe the board has seen them yet.
That's right.
So, I would suggest that I have his conditions if we have an opportunity to respond to those conditions and, you know, in a week or something so that the board has them in front of them.
Okay. Well, let's, let's just talk about how the board's going to get to the point where they're going to vote on this, too, before there's an adjournment. As I said, any of the parties can present, suggest conditions. Please send them to me. Copy all the other parties. Copy Mr. Bowler. Copy Mr. Canelia. Do not send them directly to the commissioners. Send them to me so we have one depository of whatever you, and anything else you want to send, what you think ought to happen, et cetera. And Mr. Bowler has prepared some conditions, which I recently received a copy of. Mr. Canelia, how much time? Let's put a deadline on the receipt of any filings.
Let me also ask, those conditions were, as you know, just formulated this morning, so I'll get copies of those out to all the parties tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
I think hopefully we could have something by Friday.
Well, let's, let's, let's--
Next Friday.
Tomorrow?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm going to be late.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
Halloween.
Halloween.
Okay. So, let's, let's just establish then October 31st as the date for all the parties to submit conditions and anything else, position statement, whatever you want to do. Submit that to me, and then I'll distribute everything to the board. The board's going to have to set some executive sessions to discuss how they want to proceed and get to a vote. The board has to vote, and a written decision has to be issued by this board by December 8th. That's the 45 days. It's actually December 7th, but that's a Sunday. Now, December 8th is a board meeting also.
We're not going to wait till--
There's two other meetings between now and, I'm just giving you the outside date. There's a November 10th and I believe November 24th. So--
Can we do a special meeting?
Or you could do a special meeting. But that's, I don't think you're ready to set that tonight until you get the submissions from all the parties, which will be October 31st.
John, will, will the, will, will the Villanova side be able to review what is presented from, so they would be able to say that they objected to a condition or didn't object to a condition?
Yes. I sent them to Mr. Canelia today.
I received those today.
Right. Any party can object to, just make sure you all copy each other, whatever you're, the parties, whatever you're submitting. Not the non-parties, just the parties are doing submissions.
And can they not object also, meaning in land development, what's typically communicated is no objection to that condition, which makes it easier--
Sure.
--for the Board of Commissioners?
Right.
Is that allowable in this?
Any comment they want to make on any, any other party's proposals, that's fine.
I just had a question. We have not been, the league has not been provided any information on how to contact all the other parties.
There is a list of all the parties. I believe the league is on that list. There's been--
As their representative, I haven't received anything.
I'm not sure anything's been sent yet.
Okay.
But we have the names and addresses of everybody. Is, you're the contact person then for the league. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see that every, you know, emails and get circulated. So, everybody makes their submission by the 31st. I would say that anybody that wants to respond to a submission, go to the next week, a week from the 31st. Okay? If someone wants to object to something that Mr. Canelia proposes or Mr. Bowler, and so everyone will get everything out by the 31st, and then you have another week to respond to that in writing. Email is fine, too. And then that'll be compiled and provided to the board when they deliberate.
So, it'll be two weeks then before we see any of the suggested, suggested conditions that any of the parties would provide for us?
Well, you'll have, whatever I receive by the October 31st, I will get to you that weekend.
Very good.
Yeah. That'll be next Friday, a week from tomorrow. So, and then the board will have to decide when you want to meet an executive session and then when you want to put this on an agenda for a vote. But the outer-- But the outer date is Monday, December 8th, to do that, to do all that. Okay? Is there anything else?
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
No, we need a second.
Need a second.
We have a second in advance. Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?